Okay.
Good, thank you Steve. Good morning everyone, welcome to the next weekly Covid media briefing. And the usual process applies for those who are well used to this by now, they should know the format. So you'll hear from the two directors of public health for Nottingham and Nottinghamshire. And you'll hear from Amanda Sullivan from the NHS to give an all round perspective of the Covid situation and also the impact on our hospitals, but also an update on the vaccination rollout as well. When we get to the point where we can offer up to media colleagues to ask questions, please do so by raising your hand. When we come to you, please indicate who you are and which media outlet you represent. And then we'd offer you one follow up question, and if you can limit it to one, that would be helpful. And the subject matter should be Covid related is the other thing to say. So I think I've covered all the housekeeping. I don't think there's any fire alarm tests being done today. So let's, without further ado, let's go to the director of public health for Nottingham City, Lucy Hover.
Hi, good morning everyone. So the position in Nottingham City is one of continuing increases in case numbers. This week we have had 863 cases compared to last week's 454. So in a doubling in the in the case numbers in the last week. That gives us a rate of around 260 per 100,000 compared to the national rate of 138 per 100,000. We're also seeing an increase in our positivity rate. So for everybody that gets tested, we're now at 10% of people testing positive for symptoms. And that means that it's really important that we ask people to get tested no matter how mild their symptoms are. If you have a very light cough, if you have a mild temperature, please come and get one of our PCR tests. They're very easy to book at any of our testing sites. And it's really important because with with a 10% positivity rate, it does mean that we we need to be testing as many people as possible and picking up all of those cases. When we look at our case rates, we're seeing slight increases across all age groups. But as you might expect, given the way that the vaccination programme has rolled out, we're seeing higher rates in those younger populations who have yet to be fully vaccinated. And in particular with younger people, who are the people who are more likely to be doing front facing work, more likely to be unvaccinated and more likely to be socialising. That doesn't mean to say they're not following the rules and the guidance. But a younger person is much more likely to be going out more nights of the week than than somebody of my age. And so we're asking all of our population, but particularly young people, to remember those three asks that we've spoken about before. It's really important, even as we're approaching the 19th of July, to remember those key things around hands, face, space. Remember to wear your face covering, to wash your hands and to try and keep as much distance from people as you can manage. Going out and about in the city is really Covid secure. So there's lots of opportunities for you to go out and still socialise and enjoy yourself, but maintaining that Covid distance and an increasing case rate, that's really important. The second ask is around testing, and I've already spoken about the importance of getting tested if you've got symptoms. Really important that we ask people to continue to get tested even if they don't have symptoms and even if they've been vaccinated. We are seeing that the vaccination protects people and keeps them safe, that it doesn't stop people from being able to transmit the virus on or possibly even in some cases pick up the virus themselves. Lateral flow tests are available really widely across the city. We're increasing the number of places that you can hook those up to include libraries and leisure centres and some community areas. So please come and pick up a testing kit and take a test, preferably twice a week, even if you haven't got symptoms. If you're going out to work or if you're going out to meet people, having that test beforehand is really important. And then the final ask is obviously about vaccination. We had the big weekend and I know Amanda's going to talk to us about the big weekend, really successful. Lots of people came and got vaccinated. And it's really important that that particularly for people who aren't currently had their first vaccine, that they come and get that first vaccine now. And for people who've got the second vaccine, remember that they can walk in to our test centre, to our vaccination centres and come and pick up that second vaccine so that they are fully protected, which is really important with the Delta variant. Luke, that's the update from the city this week.
Thank you Lucy. Just before we go over to Jonathan, this is what the test kits look like. You can order them online BBC. Sorry, well BBC will be time posting them as well, I understand. But if you go to gov.uk, you can order these kits directly online. I did mine yesterday and they arrived the next day, so very quick. Right, Jonathan, after, sorry, after advertising break, it's over to you.
Yeah, and other media outlets are available other than the BBC, I believe. Anyway, thank you Luke. So an update then from the county. I'll start off with a little bit about what we observe in Nottinghamshire County at the moment. And then secondly, move on to to what it is that Nottinghamshire needs to do now to to deliver the result that we're all looking for. So over the last fortnight, we have been starting to hear about Covid pressures in parts of the local NHS. At the moment, those Covid related pressures are still at relatively low levels. But they do represent an increase and they come on top of other pressures that are experienced in the local NHS. And for the first time now, for for many months, we have started to see a handful of care homes as well, which are dealing with small outbreaks. So still dealing with small numbers, but it does represent unfortunately a reversal of the the situation that we've enjoyed for the last couple of months or so. And of course, this reflects an increase in case rates and also in the proportion of people who are getting tested who turn out to have the virus. So we're seeing an increase in case rates everywhere in Nottinghamshire at the moment, an increase in all districts and boroughs. And in most places, they've gone up very sharply, even over the last week, in many places doubling. So over the last seven days in Nottinghamshire County as a whole, more than 1,000 people have tested positive for coronavirus. And as in other parts of the country, many of those people have been in have been young adults and particularly those in the age group around 18 to 22. And amongst that particular age group, we've seen 225 cases in the last week alone. So to live safely with Covid in Nottinghamshire, there are really three things that I'm urging everyone to do, three moves to make. So first of all, we're urging everyone to take up the offer of a vaccination promptly and as soon as possible. And that, the way to do that is to either book online or to walk in to one of our vaccination centres, which you're going to find open all week, next week. If you've not had your first dose, you can just walk in. If you're waiting for your second dose after 56 days, you can also walk in and get that. Those vaccinations are going to provide protection for yourself and it's going to protect your wider community as well. Secondly, I'm urging everybody to get tested and to keep testing. What that means really is that even if you've been vaccinated, it remains really important that you continue to get tested routinely and frequently. Because although the vaccine itself is going to provide you some great protection, again, and in particular against severe illness, it doesn't stop you 100% from being able to spread the virus. So it's really important that regular testing, even when you don't have symptoms, is a part of your your normal routine. And of course, on top of that, if you do get symptoms, even mild symptoms, it's absolutely essential that you isolate and get a PCR test straight away and then follow the advice that you get along with that. And then thirdly, the third move to make, that's really about keeping a safe distance from other people. It's about keeping on washing your hands. In enclosed spaces, it's also about making sure that there's a really free circulation of fresh air. So that hands, face, space and fresh air guidance that we've repeated so often. Finally, I think I just want to add that we're all looking forward very much to the game on Saturday night. We've been hearing a whole lot over the last couple of weeks about game management. And we've even observed one or two changes to formation and so on. And so what I'm asking everyone in Nottinghamshire to do at this point is to manage your game really carefully to deliver a great result for Nottinghamshire. Now that means if you're going to watch the match at home, please have a think about varying the formation of your furniture even, move it around to create some extra space. Because in that way, you can reduce the risk of passing on the virus to your friends and family. Get some of that fresh air circulating. If you are out and about and enjoying watching the match with others, please make sure that you maintain social distance. If you're out in a hospitality venue, please make sure that you're seated at a table and don't be, please don't mingle between tables. Please help those who are running the hospitality venue to keep you and those around you really safe this weekend. Thank you.
Thanks Jonathan, really helpful advice there. So let's go and talk to Amanda Sullivan for an update on the vaccination programme and rollout, but also just for a picture about the position in in the NHS system as a whole. Hi Amanda.
Hi, morning everyone. So I think as has been said, getting your vaccine is one of the best things you can do to protect yourself and your families. And so we were really delighted that around 6,000 people walked in to get their vaccines during our really successful grab a jab weekend last weekend. That was on top of the already booked people who were having their vaccines. And also included over 1,000 people who had missed their second jabs and are now fully vaccinated. So we'll have much stronger protection against catching coronavirus or needing to go to hospital. So that is is fantastic. We still have lots of vaccines available. You can ring 119 or book online on the National Booking Service if you want to book your appointment. And we also have lots of available walk in opportunities as well across our main sites. They are spread out across the week and you can get details of that by searching Nottingham vaccine opening times online or going to notccg.nhs.uk. And what we're doing is using our resources as flexibly as possible to give people as much choice as possible. And if sites are looking really booked up on that day, we will open up more slots onto those sites as well. So we're trying to do everything we can to maintain that flexibility for people to get their vaccines. And we're also coming out and about still in communities as well. So this is really important, particularly as the rates continue to rise. And unfortunately, as Jonathan said, we are now seeing hospital admissions starting to rise on the back of very busy hospitals with a whole range of other emergencies and planned procedures that may have been deferred during Covid previously. And so the rate of hospital admissions has more than doubled in in the previous week's statistics that we've seen. And that means around an average of five people a day being taken into hospital. And some of those people are needing intensive care. So we are still seeing, I say not the types of numbers that we saw previously, but there's a definite upturn there that we are now starting to see. So I would say just don't delay getting your vaccine. The sooner you get your jab, the sooner you will get protection from the rising infection rates. And the sooner you'll be able to go about your lives more safely. Thank you. That was my update.
Thank you Amanda, that's really helpful. So without further ado, let's go to our media colleagues. And I can see hands up immediately from Abby Hunt at the advertiser. Good morning Abby.
Good morning all, hope you're all well. I was just wondering, seeing as Jonathan, you said you mentioned the the smaller outbreaks across some care homes. I was just wondering how many of, how many cases are sort of contributing to the overall cases across Nottinghamshire?
Hi there Abby, thank you for the for the question. So yes, you're quite right. As I, as I said earlier, there'd been a small number, a handful of of care homes across Nottinghamshire where we've seen small outbreaks over the last week or so. I think probably the the best way to 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 frame this is to refer back to what I said about that the vast, that the majority of the cases that we're seeing at the moment are in younger adults. So in overall terms, I'm pleased to say just at the moment, the contribution that cases in older people are making is relatively small. And we're pleased about that, of course, because although many of them are now protected with the vaccine and the vaccine is really effective, nevertheless, it won't be 100% effective. So we want to make sure that we don't see more and more outbreaks in these particular settings. So I think that's probably the the best thing to say at the moment. Other than that, I'll just add that I'm waiting for the outbreak cell later on today. I'll get a little bit more information on this. But the the information we were receiving a few days ago was that in in the cases that we were looking at, those older people in care homes who had tested positive had been vaccinated and happily were not experiencing really severe symptoms. So again, that really underlines to us all the benefit that the that the vaccines have brought definitely to our older population. And if we look across the country, amongst that group, thousands of lives have been saved over the last several months. But it is also just an opportunity for us to be reminded that it brings benefits across all age groups as well. And it's really important that in Nottingham City and Nottinghamshire County, younger adults and anyone who's eligible, anyone over 18 comes forward for their vaccine. Because in that way, we can make sure that everyone gets to enjoy the protection that it confers. Thanks.
Thank you Jonathan. Abby, did you have any follow up questions for Jonathan or any of the panel? She's still on mute, probably because I muted you when you were furiously typing away.
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, no, I was just wondering about the, thanks for that anyway Jonathan. I was just wondering about the the availability of volunteers at the moment, just because we we've heard a little bit about not that many being available at Newark Showground.
Abby, I'm, I'm thinking you're probably asking about, you're asking about volunteers who are to assist in vaccination programmes specifically, is that right?
Yes, sorry, yeah, that's right.
I'm going to check to see whether Amanda has any more information on that. I don't have any myself at the moment.
No, we could, we can provide you with more more information about that. But I would say that the Newark Showground is is operational and and continuing. What we're doing is is making sure that we're matching the opening times with where there are most people that need their vaccines still. So there is some flexibility in the arrangements around that.
Okay, okay. Thanks very much then.
Thank you Abby. Okay, let's move on to Joe Locker at the Nottingham Post. Hi Joe.
Hi guys, good to speak to you all again. Hope you're all well. So my question is regarding people who are self isolating. So obviously, we know kind of in the in the past few weeks, it's significantly increased in the number of pupils in schools who are having to to self isolate and the number of people in general across the county that are having to isolate. So we would like to know, because obviously, you know, if staff at a pub, for example, have to self isolate, then the pub has to close. So we're wondering whether this is sustainable in the in the long run really. I mean, how long will people have to keep self isolating for? So pupils and bubbles at schools, especially when hospitalisations are much lower. So is it sustainable? And if not, what are the plans going forward? Thanks.
Thanks Joe. I wonder Lucy, would you like to start on that one?
This is definitely one of the the hot topics as we move towards the 19th of of July and particularly thinking forward to the the term starting again in education settings in September. This is one that's not really within our local discretion. It is, it is a national issue. And you may have heard in the last week that the government have begun to talk about double vaccination being a way that you could move away from isolation and take some some daily contact testing. So you you take a lateral flow test every day so that you didn't have to isolate. I think those plans will will become clearer over the next couple of weeks. Definitely isolation is a huge burden and we have to say thank you to our populations who have been amazing at participating over the last 16 months in in what is an absolutely huge ask of people and have complied with those expectations with a great deal of of support. So I think, I think the answer to the question is, is we need to just wait and see what what the picture will come. What I would say is that at the moment, breaking those chains of transmission is really important. Trying to to keep the the rate low, because although hospitalisations are low, what we know is that as as case rates increase in the population, so do the people most at risk of potentially getting serious harm. We've heard from Jonathan already about how the vaccine is protecting people from serious illness, but it's not 100%. And so we we want to really keep on protecting people. So I would remind people the importance of getting tested regularly, using the lateral flow tests that you can order or or pick up from community collect venues. And getting tested if they've got any sort of symptoms, no matter how mild. Because the sooner they get tested, the smaller that bubble is and and the more protected businesses are. So it's actually in businesses' interest to keep that testing going and making sure that that people are are not coming into work or places of education while they might be symptomatic. That helps not only them, but but helps us as well.
Thank you Lucy. Joe, does that address the question? A very comprehensive answer.
Yes, that's lovely. Thanks Lucy. I suppose what I wanted to follow up then is in terms of, because obviously, we're all well aware that businesses and schools have been really hard hit. And obviously, this, as you say Lucy, is is yet another burden for them. So I guess what's your message to, you know, the parents of pupils and businesses across Nottinghamshire? In the meantime, before any changes, I suppose. Thanks.
So I mean, I think I'd start with a with a huge thank you for the commitment that that they have made and the sacrifices that they've made. You know, both businesses and and families have made huge sacrifices. And to to ask them to to keep on following the guidance until the guidance is refreshed. We are in a position of increasing case rates, so we're not in a stable position yet. So following that guidance at the moment is really important. And we will support them as much as we can. So if people need help in self isolation, there is help available on the Nottingham City and I'm sure on the Nottinghamshire websites as well for people who need assistance, both financial or or other types of support. And we will also help progress people to whatever the new arrangements are as quickly as we can. I think it's really important that we we don't try and keep things in place which are no longer fit for purpose. At the moment, this is the most important thing people can do, get tested, isolate, get vaccinated. As we begin to open up more and if we can see that that hospitalisations, in spite of increasing case rates, remain steady, then we can look again, but that is a national decision.
Thank you Lucy. Jonathan, the same applies to you, you know, that difficulty there in just keeping that message, driving home that message that people have been hearing for a long time, that they might be getting tired of. How do we, how do we recognise that and how do we keep it going, I guess?
Yeah, Joe, thank you for the for the question, which which focuses in on on two things that are so important, because we want our schools to flourish, because that's so important to our young people and their development and their wellbeing in so many different ways. And and we want our local economy to flourish as well. On the schools front, I think there are, there's probably three sets of 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 thanks to to give. First of all, to to school leaders and their staff who've worked so hard and at this time to 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 switch quite often and frequently between face to face and then online learning so that education of their young people and students can continue even when they are having to isolate. So I would want to say to school leaders, thank you for that. Please keep, please continue to work with our public health teams in both of our local authorities who do remain on hand to provide advice and support to you in in the very difficult task that you do face at the moment. Secondly, I'd want to say to parents, thank you too for supporting schools in what they're needing to do. And I'd like to ask you, please, to encourage your your child to observe social distancing at this time. In some parts of Nottinghamshire over recent weeks, we're aware that young people have gathered together outside of school. And whilst that's completely understandable, it does represent a risk of further transmission. And with rates going up so so sharply, so fast in so many parts of the county, we really need everyone's support in dampening that down and getting us to the end of the roadmap safely. And then thirdly, I'd want to say to to young people in schools, many of whose education has been quite disrupted at various points over the last year, notwithstanding the enormous efforts that school leaders and teachers have gone to. I want to say thank you to you as well. And many of you have worked really hard to follow the guidance that we've put out. And I'm asking you again today, just to continue through the last few hard yards to the end of of term. Please work with your your teachers to keep your school environment safe. But when you leave school, we'd also want to ask you not, what we ask you to observe social distancing outside of the school setting as well. Because in that way, you can help to keep yourself, your mates and your family safe. Thank you.
Thank you Jonathan. My son's having his sports day today behind closed doors. So I'm experiencing that distancing firsthand. But yeah, I'm sure that situation has been mirrored for parents across Nottinghamshire today. So let's go to Hugh Caswell, BBC. Good morning Hugh.
Thank you Luke. And in the spirit of the BBC, so I'm posting people towards them, there's mine. And there's a negative one from this morning. I do as I'm told, you see. I'll turn my car off now though, I think. To Amanda first please. And just on on those hospital admissions and that increase in the last week or so. And as we move through the the next few weeks, the the important evidence the government seems to be looking for is to what extent vaccination is weakening or even breaking the link between infection and hospitalisation and death. So with admissions going up again locally, and well firstly, in sort of general terms, just how much does that concern you? But then, secondly, can you, are you able to give us an impression of the vaccination status of those people who you are seeing admitted at the moment?
Yes, thank you Hugh. Yes. So this is an area that we are watching very closely actually. And particularly, as I say, because the hospitals are busy with other types of emergencies and trying to make sure that we can treat people as promptly as possible with things that they've got planned, such as, you know, operations and treatments that people need outside of Covid. And and we know that some of those did get delayed during Covid. So we we are very keen that we don't have any interruptions into that working again because of high numbers of people in hospital. So it's an area that we are monitoring very, very closely on a daily basis to 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 see what's happening. In terms of vaccination status, we we do know that the majority of people who have to go into hospital are unvaccinated or partly vaccinated, but in the main unvaccinated. Having said that, we do know that there are occasions when people who are fully vaccinated have unfortunately had to go into hospital. Often that's, there's lots of complex reasons around that, but the evidence is that the vaccines are very protective against having to go into hospital, particularly if you've been fully vaccinated, having had two doses, particularly with the Delta variant.
Thank you Amanda. And Hugh, did you have a follow up question?
Yes, thank you Amanda. But yes, please. This sort of follows on a bit from what from what Joe was asking about really. But to what to both directors of public health. We can see a pretty sharp increase in the number of people locally and nationally being told to isolate, whether that's, you know, by the NHS Covid app or or anything else, which I guess stands to reason just with with cases increasing generally. But I can sort of seem to sense a greater frustration nowadays from people who, you know, get pinged by the app, for example. You know, given how many people are Um, you know, given how many people are vaccinated, they might be double jabbed themselves and be asking, well, why should I have to isolate if I have that protection? Um. So do you, you know, do you sympathise with that frustration, but also what do you say to people who find themselves in that situation? Or uh or rather, you know, how can you most simply explain to them why it is still necessary to be uh isolating regardless of their own vaccination or or anyone else's?
Thanks, Hugh. A fair question. Uh Lucy, would you like to address that to start with?
Yes, um I I we under, I mean, absolutely. You're you're right. Um. People being asked to isolate is directly linked to the number of cases increasing. And um, you know, we more than understand and sympathise with people's frustrations. Particularly um since, you know, seventeenth of May, when we've seen seen things begin to open up and 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 um and people have have felt more frustrated by it. What I would say is is right now, in order to secure the 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 nineteenth of July, um, you know, opening up and the lifting of those restrictions. Now is even more an important time to um to make sure that you're getting tested, isolating and and getting the vaccine. So. Uh appreciate those those frustrations, but in this window that we have to try and and make sure that we don't. Um extend the roadmap any further, this is the time now that that people can just bear with us a little bit longer. Continue to make that huge sacrifice and and try and limit the spread. What we know about the vaccine is that it it does reduce the chance of transmission, but it doesn't remove the chance of transmission. So being double vaccinated, um you know, will protect you from the, you know, reduce your risk of of death from Covid. It will reduce reduce your risk of serious illness from Covid and it will reduce the amount of Covid that you can pass on, but it doesn't remove that completely. So it's really important that you still test yourself regularly um and that you do isolate when asked to do. We'll see, as we as we said earlier, we'll see um what the government guidance is for post the nineteenth of July. Um. But right now, um we would ask people to continue to follow with the rules, certainly for the next um seventeen days.
Thank you, Lucy. And Jonathan, the same question applies to you if you could give a perspective on that.
Yeah, thank you. To be honest, I can't better or uh in any way what Lucy's covered already very sharply. Absolutely. We we sympathise with people's. Frustrations. Lucy has set out um the reasons why it is essential that all of us do keep on going through these last few. Hard yards. So we want to urge everyone to continue to comply with the advice that they receive. Uh from the NHS about isolation. And in the meantime, we also want to urge people to make routine testing. Um part of what they're doing uh every week, week in, week out, even after they have been vaccinated. Because it's these combination of measures together which is going to keep Nottinghamshire safe and also which will help to keep you. And those in your family safe as well.
Thank you. Uh but Jonathan, some of our media colleagues might have picked on what Lucy said about the roadmap date of the nineteenth. The government have made it clear that they don't want to extend it beyond that. But notwithstanding that, why is it still important then that people stick with that isolation? Knowing that that date is on the horizon and they're feeling like they're looking forward to or excited about a new way of living. What what is it? How do we? How do we reassure them that actually this is still important? Um, even even though we have that date in mind, I suppose.
Well, Joe asked a question earlier on about um that he framed in terms of sustainability. And uh all of us um locally and at government level as well. Are very focused on reaching a position which is more sustainable. And uh and to do that, uh we need to move through a a steady and measured relaxation of some of the some of the arrangements that are in place. At at the moment. So nineteenth of July, um uh which has been decided nationally clearly is the is the next major milestone in that. It was set in order to buy us some additional time to get more people vaccinated. And we want in Nottinghamshire to take every advantage of that to ensure that everyone over eighteen. Takes up the offer of a vaccine and they can do that, as we've described already, by just walking into one of our vaccine centres. But as we get more and more people in the population vaccinated, we'll find that overall our level of protection is such that some of these other measures can be relaxed. But my expectation is that living securely and safely with Covid into the months and the autumn ahead. Will still involve some responsibilities on our part going forward. Now, it will be the responsibility of government and NHS to continue to provide vaccine booster programmes, for example. And before long, I imagine that we'll hear more information about that. But I think we should also expect that the freedoms that we're looking forward to over the summer. Would also come to some extent with some some ongoing responsibility on our part. So we might have in mind things like that frequent hand washing. Or if we do develop symptoms, making sure that we isolate and and get tested. Those are examples, but we're going to hear more about that, I think, uh in the coming days. From government and of course, it's national policy around this that we'll be attending to.
Thank you, Jonathan, for clarifying that. Let's move on to Owen Shipton, NOTS TV. Good morning, Owen.
Morning, thank you. And a question on football and 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 crowds. We saw some pretty big groups in the old market square after the uh win against Germany this week. Um. We hope that England beat Ukraine, but we hope that doesn't lead to people passing on Covid to each other as well. So. Two people who who might consider going to somewhere like that and jumping around, getting too close to other people, what's the risk of doing so? And what would you say to them to make them not do so?
Thank you for the question. Uh Lucy, do you want to start?
Well, I I can't declare as being a a football celebration expert. Um. But I think it's, this is one of those, you know, exciting events that that um. Well, we all know how long it's been since 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 we made it through to this stage of the football. So I understand people's excitement. What I would suggest that people do is that they they plan how they're going to watch that game. So they book into a pub. And watch it in a Covid-secure um pub environment, or they they make arrangements to to have some people around to their house, remembering that it's a maximum of six inside your house. And Jonathan spoke earlier around how you can move furniture around to create more space, having the windows open. I would ask people to not try and gather together outside of an 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 organised event. So. Um. Try to keep your your celebrations with that group or in that Covid-secure environment. Because we know that that Covid um does like to spread amongst people who gather together in 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 closely packed situations. Um. So um I I I hope we win. Um. And um I hope that people are able to to plan ahead of how they're going to watch the game. And then think about the celebration afterwards. Um. Trying to keep with your group. Um. And 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 avoiding those those unplanned impromptu gatherings. I don't know, Jonathan, if you want to come in as a more football expert than me.
Um. Not necessarily more expert. Um. But um Owen, we touched on before, thi- this is about. This is about our individual game management. And and Lucy's described really well some of the things that we should um that we would urge people to keep in mind. And to comply with uh if they're thinking of mixing with other people um to watch the game. Um. Added to that, that first really important move which Lucy's already set out, I just would come back to again. The other two moves that we're wanting people to make, not only in preparation for Saturday, but um in the days that follow uh through July. And that again is about um vaccination. So do get yourself vaccinated. That's not going to protect you against spreading the virus. Um. If you gather together in an enormous crowd um and and hugging one another, but it is something else that we're urging everyone to do in any case. And then thirdly, it comes back to this routine testing again, even when you don't have symptoms and even when you are vaccinated. These are the things that are going to carry us over the line, not just um deliver us a result on on Saturday. Uh. But deliver us the result that we want in terms of the end of the roadmap as well.
Thank you, Jonathan. Shall we call the vaccination the Jack Grealish of the um solution possibly? Okay, let's go to Kate Baldock. I think you're from Global, Kate.
I am from Global. Hello. Hi. Can you hear me? Oh, they're great. Um. Okay, so um this is a question for Lucy. Um. I just want to ask, um just because we've seen um the harassment that um Chris Witty has faced, we just just really wanted to ask. Um, is that something that, um, you know, do we need to be looking to sort of protect our um our public health people, the the advisors, the um the experts? Um, you know, from this type of harassment? And is this something that you have experienced, maybe not in person, but online or uh by email?
Thank you for the question. Um. That's a first. Um. Jonathan, would you like to start to address that, maybe by reflecting on the national situation there?
I think Kate directed the question at at me.
Oh, apologies, Lucy. Yeah.
That's fine, but I'd I'd like Jonathan to come in because I'm sure he also has something to say on this on this subject as well. Um. The the video of of Chris Witty, the gathering outside of his house, the previous. Um, I think they're calling him being accosted rather than assaulted, um are clearly utterly unacceptable. Um. Chris Witty has done and 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 his team beneath him, Jonathan Van Tam and until recently Jenny Harris, until she took on a new role, have worked. Um unfailingly to protect the population and they have had to deliver some really difficult messages, messages. Which none of us had anticipated would ever be needed because, you know, th- this pandemic has gone on for much longer than than any of us expected it to do. And he's done that with nothing but the 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 care um and the the um the um. The thought of the compassion for the people at the receiving end of his advice. So I absolutely stand with Chris Witty. I think he handled that situation with a huge amount of of grace and decorum and um. I'd I'd like to think I'd be half as gracious in that position as he was. Um. And clearly, it was an entirely unacceptable event. Um. I haven't received um and and hope to continue not to receive such personal attacks. Clearly, um you know, as as the as the local person delivering some of these messages, um people express their concern or hesitation. Um. And they come from from places, um usually very personal places of concern. Um. And it's really important that we work with our communities and understand those concerns. It is that community engagement and I'm I'm, this is week two for me in Nottingham City, but working with our communities is a huge priority for me. And I'm I hope to very soon be getting out and meeting with our communities and hearing what their concerns are, not just about Covid. But actually, as we move from Covid and recovering, understanding how Covid has affected their lives and understanding the other challenges that there are. Because it's through that understanding that we can make sure that the guidance we're giving um is is most appropriate um to the needs of our population. Um in in particular. So I really appreciate the question, Kate, because I think it's a a really important and that was such a disappointing event. Jonathan, did you want to come in on that?
Yeah, thanks, Lucy. Um. And Kate, thank you for the for the question. And I think Lucy has um has has kind of set the 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 tone that I'd want to. Um to to reflect myself. The the advice that we've had to give in Nottinghamshire over the last months has been. Such an enormous, it's been so challenging for for so many people. In fact, to frame it as a challenge is a bit of an understatement. What people have had to endure has been um uh has been extremely difficult. Um. And has gone on for a very long time. So I think I I entirely understand the the frustration. That uh some people will feel uh and the weariness as well. And I quite understand it from time to time. Um. That gets uh e- expressed to us um uh very clearly. It's quite important that we hear those voices and uh are pleased to understand exactly how some of the measures are impacting people at a local level. Alongside that, I I'd also want to to note that even in the face of those challenges. The vast majority of people across Nottinghamshire have worked really hard to stick with all of the measures right the way through the last year. And many of those probably consider themselves part of a of a silent majority. And I think um would share everyone else's uh horror and dismay at at some of what we see from time to time and what we saw happening to 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 Chris Witty. Um. A few days ago. It's not at all representative uh in any way of what we see in general across Nottinghamshire. I'm really pleased about that. But with everyone else in Nottinghamshire, I'm looking forward to reaching a point uh where some of these measures can be relaxed. Uh. We move on to uh enjoy again uh some some freedoms that we've had to set aside for some time. But to make sure that we all get there and get there safely, there are still these just last few hard yards to do. And and so it comes back to those three moves again. Please help us to encourage everyone across Nottinghamshire to take up this offer of a vaccine because it's going to protect them and people around them. Please in yourself and for those who you engage with, uh be encouraged to take up testing routinely, even when you don't have symptoms and even when after you've had. Vaccination, because again, that's a way in which you keep yourself and those around you really safe. And of course, there's those enduring messages around hands, face, space and and fresh air that we can all stick to as well.
Oh, that's great. Thank you both so much for that, for the answers. That was really great. Thank you.
Wonderful. Uh. Thank you for asking the question, Kate. A really important one. Okay, so I think we had Rosanna. From Gemma on a six, but she might have put her hand down or left. I'm not sure. Are you still there, Rosanna?
Yeah, I don't know. Um. I didn't mean to put my hand down. I did have it up. I don't know why that's dropped. Um. But thank you. Um. Just a quick one for me. Um. I just wondered whether you had any sort of figures at all for the number of people who have had their first jab, but then. Don't seem to have bothered to come for their second jab, or if you could provide any comment on whether that is something that. Is kind of a concern to you at the moment, whether you are seeing, you know, a number of people who have sort of done half of it, but then haven't, you know, come to get their second jab.
Thank you, Rosanna. Amanda?
Yeah, thank you. So the vast majority of people, I'm pleased to say, do come for their second uh jab. And um and that really is the vast majority of people, but we do have a small number who uh who haven't for for a number of reasons. And of course, we are trying to bring the second jab forward because of the Delta variant and the rising cases to maximise that protection. So. Forward uh to eight weeks from um from twelve weeks. Um. So overall, I think um our numbers are low in terms of people not coming, but but, you know, any anyone who doesn't come is a concern. Because of that extra protection that you get against the Delta variant in particular.
Thank you, Amanda. Um. Does that, does that address the question, Rosanna?
Yeah, I suppose I was just wa- wanting to see whether it was something that, you know, you you had kind of identified as an issue really at all, but.
Yeah.
If it's if it's.
We, well, we have actually. We have identified it as an issue and we do follow people up and remind people if they haven't come for their first uh for their second jab. So it is definitely an issue that we are aware of and are taking great steps to try and minimise really, because it is a really important issue.
Is it worth saying, Amanda, that um at all of the centres, there are clinicians available to talk to anybody? So if somebody. Had their first vaccine and is concerned about having a second, or maybe they had some side effects from the first one, they didn't feel very well for a few days. But actually coming along and talking to somebody at the centre might might help them make the decision to have the second vaccine. So to anybody who feels anxious about having it, to come along, you can just walk into our centres. Um. Any of the vaccine centres and there are clinicians available who'll be able to talk you through um how how the second vaccine might be for them.
Yeah, that there are always people on hand for advice. Yeah.
Thank you. Um. So thank you to our panel. Thank you to our media colleagues. Really interesting variety of questions there. Um. So that brings us to a a close. We are, I think, still planning one for next Friday. Um. And so bid you all a safe and happy weekend and here's to um here's to the Three Lions on Saturday. Bye bye.